Even if you kind of have to be for a class, we still appreciate you being here. And you could have chosen any governmental meeting, right? County Commission, School Board, and you chose us, so thank you.
I did several kids at open house, the Scout badge for having to speak with the city.
Yeah, yeah. The Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 Meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We offer an opportunity to our residents at each regular meeting to come before us in an open podium, so I want to read an open podium invitation. No one signed up this evening, that's why we did not have it this evening. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting, and by the way, items that are not on the agenda that evening. Typically, the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter to help us be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getchell, I believe we have one donation this evening.
Mayor, we have a few donations.
I believe we have a couple. I didn't read them down. Turn the page, sorry.
Yes, no, we're, as you know, we're, one of our exciting items of a meeting is when we're able to have these donations and allow for many of our events and activities to be funded outside the city's general fund. Mr. Lothammer will be handling these donations.
Your Honor, council member, the first donation is from Summit Place towards the senior center. One of the things I want to highlight, because we do get a lot of cash or contributions of cash towards the senior center to help defer some of the costs, especially for the participants, but we also have a lot of people that are volunteering their time. And an example where these two come together was this past Monday. We had a lunch, a fall lunch at the senior center, quite a few people, many of you have seen in the past when we do the lunches. But in addition to Summit Place providing a cash donation, there were also members there helping serve, and we really appreciate that, and not just from Summit Place, but many other companies that are affiliated with senior services will also lend some of their time and talent, and we do get individuals from the community that want to come and make that as best experience as they can for our senior population. So we do appreciate those contributions as well, and we do want to recognize tonight a gift from Summit Place for $200 towards the senior center.
Great. And again, we make this statement every time we get these donations, but they really are helpful to extend our tax dollars because we just can't do it all, so we deeply appreciate it. Counsel, is there a motion to accept this donation?
I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the contribution in the amount of $200 for senior center fall lunch and $200 for the holiday lunch from Summit Place.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. My belief, is it again? Mr. Lothammer?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
I know, Your Honor, you and several of the council members had the opportunity this weekend to attend our Harvest to Halloween event out at Lake Riley, and that's really something that goes a long way with our staff that work those events and also our volunteers, but it was great to hear so many people, and as I walk around at those and listen to what some of the kids are saying, you really get the full impact of what we do at those events and with the programs that we offer as a city. So it was a great day, thousands of people, literally. We did track the number of bus trips, so we'll start to do some of that math and get a little more accurate number, but all buses were full going to and from, and it was a great weather day as well, but some really neat things to overhear from families and kids and the experience that they had. This is actually two of the contributions that we received. There are two more that will be recognized at our next council meeting, just based on when we received them, but these two, one is from the American Karate Studio for $150 and $100 from Wellspring Health Center, so we'd like to recognize them at this time, and then again, next council meeting, there's two others that we'll be recognizing.
Thank you. And did you have enough to do with the city open house to potentially know numbers to that, or would that be somebody else, one of our chiefs?
I actually think Mr. Getchell may have the best estimate, if not now, at our next meeting, we could reveal that, too.
Because even if later on during council member reports, I'd like to see we, as a council, just recognize and acknowledge the phenomenal work of our staff at these last two Saturday events, and you don't have to come up with numbers, but it would be great to have a guess, and my sense was 800 to 1,000 at the open house and possibly 2,000 to 2,500 at the Halloween, Harvest to Halloween Fest, but at any rate, big turnouts, and our staff did phenomenal, but I'm giving it away, we'll save that a little bit later. Okay, so, counsel, is there a motion to accept both these two donations into one motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the contribution in the amount of $250 towards the Harvest to Halloween event, with 150 from American Karate Studios and 100 from Wellspring Health Center.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. So, Mr. Getchell, I did see your note reminding me, and I don't know, this might be the best time to maybe make a comment about that, and then during council member reports, we can refer more to recognition of staff, but Eden Prairie history, as we know it today with our current government, started, as we know it, in 1963 with an election in 1962 that basically incorporated our town. We'd been a township, which crosses the state of Minnesota today, there are townships everywhere, but we incorporated, and because of that, we elected our very first mayor, Don Rogers. Since that time, there have been, out of order and coming back and forth, but basically 10 different distinct, unique mayors in Eden Prairie history. Three of them have passed away, but we just had a fourth one pass away this week, and that was Wolfgang Penzel, and he served from 1976 to 1984, and he was the fourth mayor of Eden Prairie, so I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize his passing and his contributions to the city, which are long and deep, so we appreciate and very much Wolf's contributions. All right, with that, we do have the approval of agenda items, and I did want to add that one item of acknowledgement and recognition of staff contributions at the last two Saturday events. Counsel, is there anything else that you would like to add to the agenda this evening? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The two minutes, if anybody have any questions to raise or corrections in either the workshop or the city council meeting held back on October 4th. All right, if not, is there someone that would make a motion to approve both of them?
I'll move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. City council meeting held Tuesday, October 4th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Consent calendar, we have a short one this evening. For those people attending their first time meeting tonight, consent calendar has on it items that are regular, perfunctory, they don't require a special individual vote, we clump them together, but counsel, you have a right to pull any item if you want to question it or ask more about it. Any items on there that you wish to find out more about? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will move for approval of items A through E on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, we do have two public hearings this evening. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is a site plan review for a facade remodel at 7975 Wallace Road by 360 Wall Systems. This applicant's requesting, as I mentioned, the title of facade remodel. The proposal is to remodel the front of the building on the three facades that are visible from Wallace Road to create an updated look, to improve the building. The remodel itself is completely code compliant. Due to the more simple nature of the approval, this type of application goes straight to the city council, does not get reviewed by planning commission, so you do not have any information or recommendation from planning commission. Also, since it is site plan review, simple facade remodel, it's not a multiple reading item, you simply hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution for site plan review if you so choose. The applicant is here tonight to give you an overview of their proposal for the property, and then again, you would hold a public hearing, and we ask that you adopt a resolution for site plan approval.
Excellent. Please come forward, give your name and address.
My name's Kevin Roche. I am representing 360 Wall Systems, 7975 Wallace Road. Mayor, council members, thanks for having me. Pretty much like he said, it's just a simple facade remodel of basically rock concrete block that's there, and we're just trying to dress it up, paint it, put some metal panel accents on it, and it's on the western half of the building. So I just have a quick slideshow here of just a few slides of kind of some renderings. Basically, here's what's here now, it's raw block, all the glass stays, never been painted, never sealed, something needs to be done with it sooner than later. These are the other elevations, same exact thing. And then here's kind of, here's the rendering, what's proposed, basically painted, it looks black here, but it's more of a dark gray, and then we're going to put tongue and groove aluminum metal panel siding, soffit above every window elevation. No maintenance product. The picture on the right is kind of a, the same product on a different building, and that's pretty much it. Nothing else will change from access, parking lot, anything else, just colors and dressing it up, so.
Counsel, before we have the proponents sit down, any questions? I have one while you're thinking. Eden Prairie's done a great job with having consistency of all four sides, not consistency, of having, not having that backside be center block, or you know, something like some other cities, and I'm okay if the backside of this is what we saw the previous three sides to be, and that's my question.
The backside has been painted, it's like a cream color, we just repainted it the same exact color, and it's, it's the older part of the building, that was built in the 60s, I believe, so it's almost kind of two separate buildings, there's a separate tenant in there, and you can't really see back there. I mean, I'm not opposed to doing anything to it, but it kind of is a different, it doesn't have the storefront glass like we have on the other side.
I understand, so I guess I would ask Julie, then, any precedent issues, because we've been really consistent through the years, just thinking even Amazon, whoop, am I allowed to say that, fresh? The mystery grocery store that's going in diagonal from the mall that everyone knows is Amazon Fresh, but we're not allowed to say it, I just did again. At any rate, we know that like the four sides of that are, they're beautiful, and they, of course, in that case, it can be seen from all four sides. So any issues or problems whatsoever if we just do three sides in this case, and I'm thinking more precedent than this exact location.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe that there are any issues doing the three sides and leaving the fourth, because it, to the applicant's point, it was constructed back in the 60s, it is protected as a non-conforming use, so it is allowed to be maintained for the time being.
Okay.
You know, I think to add to, it is almost, it's a separate business.
Yes.
Separate use, so it almost looks, it's not as if there's this four-sided building, and one side is just completely different than the others, it's almost a separate business.
Yeah, there's a loading dock bay in the middle, that kind of, it looks like totally two different buildings. And the only way you can get to that side is through our parking lot anyways. I mean, you can see a little bit from Wallace, but not much.
Okay. Counsel, you can either, since they gave you time, ask any questions now, or we can hold the public hearing and close it and then ask questions, it's really up to what you want. Mark, did you have a question now you want?
I just wanted a clarification, and maybe you could do it quickly. Tongue and groove aluminum siding.
So it's looks.
Sounds pretty cool.
Yeah, it's basically, give you the look of wood, but no maintenance, and it's, I don't know if it's a 3D printed, not 3D, but a.
Does it almost look like plank floor, you know, like?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, if you can go back to that last slide, you can kind of see it on another building, that, on the right picture there, that's what it looks like, and it's not zoomed in all the way, but.
That's what kind of.
It looks like, it's made to look like wood, and you don't have to.
Maintain it.
Maintain it.
Very good, thank you.
It looks nice, it's expensive, too. I don't, that doesn't matter, but.
So it's code compliant?
Yes.
How expensive, I'm just kidding. If you want to sit down, we'll call you back up if we need you.
Appreciate it.
And thank you, thanks for being here. And people in the audience, this is a public hearing, anyone is permitted to come up and address the council on this issue tonight, please do so if you wish to address the council. Get extra points in your classroom, maybe? Okay, seeing none then, counsel, let's see, let me ask you, if we think that we're ready, actually, we could go ahead and close and pass the motion, and then we could still have questions or comments. Okay, someone make the motion to close the public hearing and go ahead and say, adopting the resolution, then we'll move from there.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for a site plan review on three acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, counsel, any further discussion, questions, comments? All right, let's vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, welcome kind of back or something, congratulations, so. All right, Mr. Getchell, the second public hearing for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a time of the year where we certify all of our special assessments, various special assessments to the property tax roll. The council is asked to hold a public hearing and then approve a resolution, the assessments are then sent on to Hennepin County, and then they're certified and placed on the following year's property taxes. These are typically related, assessments related to infrastructure projects, so you'll see sewer and water connections and trunk fees. Also, it's that time of the year where we're assessing contracted removal that we may do for grass mowing that we do, tree removals that we do. In some cases, people are asking us to do this work and to be assessed, and there is interest associated with the assessment, as you can see in the packet, and sometimes we're doing this because we need to go on to the property and remediate a nuisance. So we have the entire roll with all the individual property identification numbers are in the packet, the exhibit shows the property parcel ID, the party that's being assessed, the amount being assessed, and you are asked to hold a public hearing and then adopt the resolution, and again, that resolution gets sent to the county and placed on the property tax roll for the following year.
Rick, how do we arrive at 5.14%? Is that standard across the county?
I believe that our finance division uses a rate that's somewhat tied to a bond rating percentage, maybe it's 1% or 2% above what our bond rating is at the time.
Is it consistent that if you went to Edina or Hopkins, you would get a similar potential rate for special assessments?
I would think so. It could potentially be higher in other cities because we get lower interest rates on our bonds, so it could be a bit higher, but I think you would find, Mayor, that most cities would be in that range, in the same range.
We're not out of line in any case.
I would not say so, no.
Okay. So counsel, this is a public hearing, or potential, but do you want to ask any questions prior to opening up, or should I proceed?
I'll wait.
Okay. This is a public hearing, then, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue of the 2022 special assessments, please come forward. Just not in for that extra credit tonight, huh? For the audience, or for the people at home, we are privileged tonight to have three, six, nine, about 10 or 11, 12 students from the high schools, so, not that everyone else in the audience isn't very special as well, we just appreciate all of you coming. All right, counsel, why don't we close the public hearing, and if you wish, we could adopt the resolution, and then I'll pause and let anyone, unless you want, if your question relates to not knowing how to vote on the resolution, that's fine, too, whatever you prefer.
Just curious.
Oh, well, let's close the public hearing, just to get it closed, and then we'll take curious questions as well. Someone want to close the public hearing?
Move to close a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, council member Nelson.
There seems to be a great number more tall grass and weed removals than typical. Is this an atypical year, or am I remembering wrong? I see some of it are some restaurant things, but.
Council member Nelson, I would say that this appears pretty typical. I think that you are correct, though, a few of the larger numbers are related to some restaurants, particularly those that serve Whoppers, and so that might be why you see a few more of those on there due to the building projects we had there, but I think in any given year, you may find six to 12 of these, and you can see that, as opposed to the one restaurant units corporation, these are all in about the $200 range.
Thank you.
And just to let people know, we have an ordinance that's very specific that conditions have to reach a certain level, and grass has to be, what, a foot tall or something, and I'm sure trees have to be, we just don't walk onto people's properties and begin mowing and then charging them, but it has to be reaching a certain threshold, and that's good, because neighbors are generally pleased if a property's in decline, and we're helping to fix it, and it just preserves the quality of our community, so. All right, counsel, any further discussion or questions? If not, someone needs to make the second half of the motion.
I'll move to adopt the resolution approving all special assessments presented in the fall of 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, payment of claims, any items that you wish to find out more about or question in the long lists of expenditures, checks, payments? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
Motion to approve the payment of claims is submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Freiberg.
Aye.
Council member Nelson.
Aye.
Council member Toomey.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, ordinances and resolutions, it looks like we have two as well. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor. Two very much housekeeping ordinance amendments. First is, the first one is related to criminal background checks in City Code Section 2.33. In a nutshell, prior to 2013, state law said that a city must conduct background checks through any local ordinance that they may have that authorizes those. Since then, Minnesota state statutes now covers all applicable processes and applications related to background checks, so we simply are repealing our section of the code that relates to background checks, it is not necessary.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance repealing Section 2.33 of the Eden Prairie City Code relating criminal history information.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Second is related to Section 535, and that's tobacco. Again, housekeeping, and you know, when I say housekeeping, a lot of times our folks that are issuing licenses and working in the field over time, you know, come across different provisions or different issues that are somewhat minor, but would be very nice to clean up in code, to make it easier for them to administer and implement the code, so that's a case here with tobacco. So there are a few different revisions here, really quickly, and you can see it in the packet, we're updating a few definitions related to what a tobacco-related product is or an electronic delivery device is, adding the definition of a tobacco product shop, amending some of our penalties for those that sell tobacco to those under 21, you can see those, for second, third violations, and then updating penalties for those who purchase tobacco with a false ID. You can see there that our focus is not on criminally citing people, but educating them, asking them to provide community service, being part of education programs and diversion programs, not necessarily just fining them. So those are some of the, those are the updates to the code. You may remember that we recently added to this section, this 5.35 procedures for THC licensing a few months back. These are just other housekeeping items on their own related to tobacco.
I appreciate that it's not going to be a criminal citation, and that we're not just going to slap people on the hand, send them on their way, but we're really going to try to educate and actually end up helping someone, so I think that's super positive. Interesting also that we're defining or choosing to marry together that if you have a tobacco license and you also have a THC edible license, that now if you break the one, you also break the other, so I think that's good to make sure that that's clear and tie that together. Counsel, questions, Mark, or comments?
I just got a question from Mr. Getchell here. What were the penalties prior to this? It says 300, 600, and 1,000 now.
Yeah, councilman, go ahead.
I was going to say, I have these, they were amended by the legislature a couple years ago, it used to be $75, $200, or $250.
So substantially increased.
Yep, and those are in statute.
Okay, statute.
Again, mirroring state statute, so this is what all cities would have if they followed this.
I was wondering, okay.
Good question. Other comments or questions? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance?
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 5, Section 5.35 relating to tobacco.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving down to council member reports, my thought here is that I would just, again, acknowledge the two really, I think, incredibly successful city events, and then allow you all, if you wish, to say whatever you wish to say regarding our staff, but, Rick, help me here, but was Lori Brink in charge of both, or just the one, and who, tell us, I guess, who generally was a staff person that was in charge of the open house and then in charge of the Harvest to Halloween?
I believe Lori Brink, our recreation manager, was the point person of both events, but I'm, okay, Jay's nodding, because he.
Okay, excellent, and I know there was a lot, and Jay, what would you guess for city staff involved? It may be difficult to guess, but in both events? I mean, it's hard to say with the open house, because we had fire and police, we might have had 300 people here, but.
Yeah, just at Harvest to Halloween, it was probably close to 25 city staff, which included parks and recreation, our park maintenance staff, police, fire, and then a whole host of volunteers to also make that happen, yeah.
Excellent. And with the open house, Mayor, that is citywide, and we used to have this rhythm, we were getting going pre-COVID, where it would be kind of in every other year, one, on one year, you would have just kind of police and fire, and the other year, you'd open up City Hall, and you'd have public works, and we've decided that it's been so popular with it being citywide, that we open up the whole city center and campus, so you have every, I would argue, have every single.
I would argue, you have every single department of the city represented, almost every division has a table, or an area, and our commissions, our commissions show up, so our Human Rights and Diversity Commission had a table, our Sustainability Commission had a table, our Heritage Preservation Commission had a table.
The council had a table.
Our city council had a table, the very hard work that you did in handing out candy was much appreciated, I know there are a lot of people to talk to, so.
That was Kathy and Mark.
When you think about the citywide piece, you get everybody, you get everybody out there, and it's similar to what we talk about with that Government Academy we host, people just really like to show off their equipment and what they do in their departments, and to the number, Mayor, this is just a guess, to the open house piece, because Jay mentioned, you know, possibly, you know, well over 1,000, if not closer to 2,000 with the Harvest to Halloween. With citywide open house, I think we sold out of the free hot dogs, and there were, I think, 750 of those hot dogs, and you know, you could argue there were many, many people that didn't even get a hot dog. There were some, like yourself, that I think had two, but if you kind of look, if you look at the math.
But who's counting?
But if you look at the math, you're probably well over 1,000.
Okay.
In terms of the open house.
You know, I've often had certain metaphors I've used through the years to talk about the value of civic life, and I've sometimes, without disparaging our neighbors, Woodbury or Plymouth, but I'll say, I don't want Eden Prairie to be just another Woodbury, I want us to be that special, unique town that had, so sorry if someone loves Woodbury or has relatives there, I do, but nonetheless, to have Eden Prairie be something special that has these events throughout the year that make this community still feel small-town-ish, right? And we had two back-to-back that were just so successfully attended, and the feedback we received, and that's what makes a community, I mean, community could argue, schools and churches and nonprofits and civic organizations, absolutely, but these key, large, fun events, People Fest, Rib Fest, put on by the Rotary, you know, certainly 4th of July, Schooner Days, you know, these are the things that make Eden Prairie unique and special, and that's what I want to acknowledge, our staff on Lori Brink and her team, and of course, that they all report up through Jay, they all report up through Rick, he reports to us, but nonetheless, so, just to have that many city people involved, and it was, it was fun, and it was exciting to be here, and we had helicopters landing, and you know, we had fire truck demonstrations, and.
Canines.
Say what?
The canines.
Yes, the canine demonstrations, and the hot dogs, which by the way, were very good, I did only have one, but, and the root beer, I mean, it was just, it was really, really a nice event. And then the Harvest to Halloween event, which used to be in the old days, like two years ago, we used to have, you know, just to be the Harvest Fest, which was really good and concentrated a lot, and kind of historic event, but we added, I don't know if it was last minute because of COVID, but in the mall, didn't have Halloween treats, I guess, that year, but we added Halloween to it last year, and suddenly had 2,000 people show up, you know, and so what a, what a nice innovative, it was kind of one of those silver linings that came out of COVID, I think, but I hope that we, you know, continue and keep learning how to make it better and better, but, so Jay, please, please thank all the Park and Rec staff, and then Rick, if you would thank police and fire and engineering and, I don't know, everybody, everybody you just mentioned, a pretty amazing staff event. So counsel, any further comments?
I would just like to thank, wasn't it the Fire Auxiliary that did the hot dogs, that did lunch? I'd like to thank them for their hard work, that was really good.
They were, that was a, one, it was a good hot dog.
Once a year, I have a hot dog.
Mark or Kathy?
It was especially nice at the Outdoor Center, had, you know, there was turtle shells and some kinds of fur pieces and things for kids to be able to touch and look at and ask questions about, plus know that there was more of that kind of stuff at the center, so that was particularly fun, and seeing all the kids that went through, and it was a very good event.
Mark.
I got two comments, one on each event. The open house, I can't tell you how, what it did as far as felt inside, watching Chief Gerber and Chief Sack and staff from the Fire Department and the Police Department, getting down to a five-year-old's level on their knee and talking to him as far as, you know, giving him candy or whatever you're giving out on that day, that's something where we can really, in these trying times, make great headways, it's with the youth, and thank you very, very much as far as your staffs, I was totally impressed. Echoes over now, let's just talk about that, the Halloween one, again, with the little kids, I don't know if everyone noticed, but there's a whole lot of people smiling that day. That really felt good.
Candy tends to do that.
Huh?
Candy tends to do that sometimes.
I was smiling, candy did it, that's right, but realistically, when you see so many people smiling, in the innocence of the, you know, of the children just having such a wonderful time in a safe environment, just an amazing job, thank you.
So, our staff, 300 full-time, was it doubled part-time during seasonal, but our staff, I always say, make us look good, they go out and do the hard work that we set the policy and the direction for. I hope that our staff feels, because we do, I hope they feel very supported by us, and that we have such gratitude towards the work that they do. So, thank you, and Rick, if you would just communicate, that's so much to everyone, so. With that, counsel, is there anything else to come before the council tonight, Mr. Getchell or council members?
Nothing, no.
All right, with that, then is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. This meeting is adjourned. High school students, if you want any, come up and chat, or do whatever you can, or if you want to just leave, feel free to do that, yeah, oh, you're shaking your head way too fast, but.
Do you want to autograph?
Yeah, but no, if you truly have any questions or.